I call the Board of Aldermen meeting to order for the City of Warrenton on May 21, 2013. At this time, I would like everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One change to our agenda, item 13 has been deleted, that there are no amended agenda items for tonight. One thing I would ask for the public, if you have a cellphone or any type of technical instrument, if you would shut those off so they don't bother or disturb the board. Item number three on the agenda is approval of minutes on item A, special meeting minutes from April 25, 2013. Any additions or corrections?
Make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes from April 25, 2013.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Dryer to approve the special meeting minutes from April 25, 2013. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, motion carried six zero. Item 3B, regular board meeting minutes from May 7, 2013. Any concerns, corrections or additions?
Motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from April 7, 2013.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the regular board meeting minutes from May 7, 2013. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, motion carried six zero.
Can we split this vote?
Pardon me?
Can we split this one between open and executive since I wasn't at the executive?
Oh.
Yeah, I wasn't at the executive on the 14th. So if we do the open, I can vote for it. If we do the executive, I have to abstain.
You want to split those? Okay.
Alderman Ock, that's all for executive. You go into open session and then we go into executive session, make a motion going to executive.
Even though I wasn't at the executive?
And you weren't at the open either. You weren't at the open or the executive. The regular board meetings was the regular, the minutes from the May 7 meeting.
Okay.
And then to do an executive session before we start a regular meeting, and then we make a motion to go into executive session. So the open and executive is all for the executive session minutes.
Got you confused.
I am totally confused.
You need abstaining on this vote.
All right, I'll abstain. Okay, that's fine.
Very good.
And then you can explain to me later.
I will.
Item 3C, open and executive session minutes from May 14, 2013. Any concerns, other than Alderman Ock got him thoroughly confused?
Thoroughly confused.
Okay. We'll explain it to you.
All right.
Entertained a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the open and executive session minutes from Tuesday, May 14, 2013.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Castorley to approve the open and executive session minutes from May 14, 2013. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions?
Aye.
Motion carried five zero with one extension.
Ask a question?
Yes, sir.
On the 14th was the night we had, oh, was it we had the public hearing?
Yes.
So this has nothing to do with the public hearing?
Nope.
Okay.
In order to go into executive session, we first have to open the meeting.
I'm no longer confused about this. Other things may be about this.
All right.
Do we pass these down?
On item four, hearing from the public at each meeting, we give the public a chance to come and address the board. We ask you to come forward to the podium, state your name, ask that your remarks be kept to five minutes or less. So if anyone would like to address the board, please do so at this time. Please come forward, please.
I really want to, but if you want, you must. Cindy Fitch, Warren County. First I have a question. Have you passed the ordinance for the EEZ zone, or is that going to be done tonight?
Tonight.
Okay. So this is in reference to that. You've been asked to fast-track this decision on the EEZ because Warren County may not be eligible under the 2010 census data, which is available but not yet loaded into the computer system. This is a very complicated issue that should be thoroughly looked at without the time constraints of this deadline. I urge this governmental body that is aware of that fact, that we will probably not be eligible to let this deadline pass, put the whole issue on hold, and wait to see if we actually will qualify when the 2010 data is uploaded. We should use the 2010 data, not the 2000 data. Calway County has put their EEZ on hold because they must use the 2010 data. This is a 25-year commitment for tax credits to this community, and with the latest changes being made by the legislature, we do not know how this will affect this program and its future implementation. It would be prudent to wait and see what changes are going to be made and how these changes may affect an EEZ in this community. And again, I'm against the EEZ in Warren County. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board? Not hearing from anyone, then we're going to move on to the Board of Aldermen's comments, and we'll extend the same courtesy to them, that if any of the board members would like to speak to the public regarding any issues, do so at this time. Nothing? What about on this, nothing?
We're going to have plenty of stuff to talk about throughout the night. We can cut this section short.
Starting to worry me. I'm even going to make it worse, because my comments are also pretty brief. My only comment here is asking the Board of Aldermen for a letter supporting the Highway 47 Bridge grant. I think most of you in your packet got a letter from Mr. Zick asking us if we would send a letter to Washington DC in support of the bridge across the Missouri River at Washington, Missouri. I need your authorization to send Mr. Ray LaHood, Secretary of the Transportation, US Department of Transportation, Washington DC, a letter in support of the new bridge. Any questions or concerns, I'll entertain a motion if none.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Ock to issue a letter to the Secretary of Transportation in support of the bridge across the Missouri River. Any other discussion or concerns about it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, motion carried six zero. Item number seven, request for multiple road closures on June 1st for the Festival of Fun and the 5K run, Chamber of Commerce. Anyone want to address that?
You want me?
That'd be good.
Okay.
Teresa Scott, and I'm here to represent the Chamber of Commerce. We are planning to do a 5K as part of the Festival of Fun. It's the same course that we've run for the Catch the Globe for several years, and since there won't be a Catch the Globe this year, we just thought we'd borrow the course for this other run. So it would be the same closures. And I'm assuming you all had the map and all that in your packet, so if you have questions, I...
Upland Street?
Turn at the closed office, back down.
The only thing I think we want to make sure that the businesses that might be affected are all notified, that the street's going to be closed for a little while.
And you want the Chamber to do that?
Yes, we would. I don't know, Chief Hottishell, in the past, has the police taken on that deal, or we leave that up to the...
Yeah, we have not.
Okay.
In the past, it was, like Teresa said, it was coincidental with the Catch the Globe. So the city did reach out and make those notifications then, but because this is their event, I would say.
Okay. I know we've had, in the past, we've had a couple businesses, especially the restaurants, all of a sudden, they couldn't get customers to their shop that morning. So we would like to let them know how long it's going to be closed and the time period.
It's an hour, and it basically, the parking issue is for an hour, and most of it's on the side of the street where there's really, it's not going to impact much.
It might actually bring business to them for breakfast.
It might.
Very possible.
And if there's a car in the way, we'll just go around it, so.
So we would appreciate if you'd take care of that.
All right. Anything else?
Maybe make it a flatter course next time?
We need to vote to, they're asking for us to go ahead and approve this, and I don't think we will have another meeting before that, will we?
Nope. So we, if, we're going to need a motion to approve the road closures.
Make a motion to approve the application for prorates proceedings and open-air public meetings by the Warrenton Area Chamber of Commerce for the date of June 1, 2013, from approximately 8:00 AM to approximately 9:00 AM, pending notification by Warrenton Area Chamber of Commerce of the affected businesses.
Second.
Alderman Dryer, seconded. Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Dryer. Melody, would you read that back, because I was going something else.
Motion to approve the Chamber of Commerce Festival of Fun 5K run from 8 to 9:00 AM, pending approval from the businesses, downtown businesses.
Pending notification, yeah.
All those in favor of the closures, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, motion carried six zero. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
Machine went out on me. Item, let me see where I'm at here. Item eight, part-time health insurance. We discussed this once before. I think the board had voted on it and decided that we would not offer health insurance to part-time employees. Since then, we've had some Alderman requests that we revisit this and rethink it. So at this time, I have this back on the agenda, and we'll enter a discussion on health insurance benefits for permanent part-time employees.
I am the one that asked that that be put back on the agenda since the last time we discussed this and had a vote. I have had an opportunity to not only discuss with some of the part-time employees that would be affected, but also some of their supervisors, as well as Operations Manager Thorn. And there are some aspects of this issue that I don't think were discussed previously. One of the concerns that Ms. Thorn expressed was that when we are hiring, it is often harder to actually fill the positions of part-time versus full-time. There are plenty of people out there looking for full-time jobs. It's hard to find somebody that wants limited hours in the areas that we are seeking that are qualified. Along with that, currently, and I'm not a proponent of approving benefits or being specific to employees holding the position, but currently, those positions are held by individuals that bring to the table experience and specialization over and above what you would expect to normally get from a starting part-time employee. They offer to the city through that expanded knowledge well over the value that we are paying them. So I think that we need to consider the ability to not only retain those employees, but at the point that they leave the employment of the city, to be able to replace them with people that offer skills over and above what you would normally expect, and over and above what you're going to get just from a $12 hour, $12 an hour starting employee. Along with that, I think that, I'm not even going to go down the next path. I just think that it is, it was worthy of consideration, those additional aspects of this issue, and hope that the board would reconsider their previous stand on this and offer the permanent part-time employees' healthcare coverage. And I would, I, well, I'm done talking to you.
Let me refresh my memory. We're talking about three individuals that occupy permanent part-time employment.
That's correct.
And refresh me on, of those three, were all of them not interested in health insurance? Or did we poll those?
No. Two of them said they absolutely were interested. The third said that they would potentially be interested, but wanted to compare the cost to what their current cost was.
Okay.
And never came back with, you know, an answer to that.
Okay. Any other comments?
And I want to just kind of reiterate a little bit what John was saying. After that meeting, I had a little more time to get involved more with what those people do. And I know we were talking about cost and the expense of the health insurance, but I think if we have to replace these people, losing the staff that are in those three roles right now would cost us a lot more with the extra contractor work that we would have to provide to do some of the things that they do for the city automatically. Some very talented people that have gone over and above doing things for our city and continue to do so on a daily basis, that we would have to pay more staff to do. I think one of the individuals as well, he drove his own vehicle, never had a company, city vehicle either.
I don't know about that.
Well, I think you pointed out, John, that, you know, this shouldn't be specific to people, it should be specific to persons or to positions. And most of the arguments are persuasive toward people, not positions. So you're setting a policy that will apply to whoever happens to come on. Because if these people leave, and I don't know that they are...
Right.
Or they're not, but you're setting a standard. I guess the thing that I'm still a little baffled about is, you know, this 30 an hour issue is something that's industry-wide, and most places that I'm familiar with and I work with, they're looking at ways to move away from 30 hours so they don't have to pay the benefits, and the city's moving toward keeping the 30 so they can offer benefits. And it just doesn't, it seems counterintuitive, what most people are doing. And they all have valued employees. And we have valued employees at our work. We probably have 15 people who are 30-hour people, and we're moving them away from that as opposed to paying out more benefits.
Well, and that's a philosophical issue. My philosophy is that that is not always the responsible thing to do. And I am not one, my conversations with Ms. Thorn, I think she will attest to, I am not one that is a believer in overcompensating employees. I do believe in fairly compensating employees. I don't think that it's necessarily being a responsible employer to move people away to avoid having to supply insurance. I certainly wouldn't be a proponent of doing that in this case. And you're right, it is absolutely a philosophical difference. I do not believe in that what I am proposing is to compensate the employee. It is absolutely to compensate the position. And again, I want to have a position that is compensated such that if these employees that currently we get great value from were to leave, that we can backfill that with experienced, talented craftsmen that currently hold those positions. So again, I think it just comes down to a philosophy of how you manage people.
Alderman Clark? I probably agree more with Alderman Ock. Most people I know, employers are going, trying to figure out how they can get around it, and most of them are just going to cut back their below 30 hours. It seems if insurance was an issue, we had an opening in that department for full-time employment, and none of those people even applied for it.
I don't know if they did or not, and I don't know if they're qualified for...
The ones I talked to didn't apply for it.
Well, if they're not qualified for it a full-time, how can they be qualified for it a part-time? I don't know. I don't know what they were looking at. My understanding was that was more of a specialized position that was held previously, that they were looking for somebody with specific carpentry skills, that kind of skill to fill that position, not necessarily the skills that are offered by those employees.
Are those employees required to have CDL certification?
No.
And maybe if they worked for the Public Works thing, they would have to have a CDL, so maybe they weren't qualified or didn't want to go through that qualification. I don't know that's a fact.
But they're not working for Public Works, they're working for ground and maintenance.
But we asked about why they didn't take a full-time, or why they didn't apply for a full-time position, and that might be one issue that they, maybe they didn't think they could qualify for CDL certification, so. Any other comments on this end?
Well, I think we've got some good people in these positions, and I think some couple of them really didn't want to work full-time. It was kind of a part-time thing, that's why they applied themselves, so. I don't have a problem with, either way, whatever we do.
I know in one of those part-time, the reason they didn't want to, because they had other business that they were wanting to do at the same time, so they were wanting that flexibility.
Alderman Dryer, haven't heard from you.
I really don't have anything to say.
No comment on which way to go on?
Either way, for uncertain.
You know, I'm getting mixed comments from the board, so it's up to you all, if you want to present a motion to offer that, and let the motion go on its own.
I'll make a motion that we give health insurance benefits to the three full-time permanent part-time employees.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Castorley, seconded by Alderman Cornell to offer health insurance for the full-time, part-time employees. Is that correct?
Permanent part-time.
Permanent part-time employees.
I bobble it every time also.
I see you're giving it to the position, not to the employee.
Any other concerns?
What happens if they go below 30 hours?
If they go below?
If we're offering this to them, the...
Then they're not permanent part-time.
Correct.
I think the permanent part-time is the qualification of the 30 hours.
Are these people clocking it up?
Yes.
So there is a possibility they go below 30.
Pretty much so.
Chances are they're going to be over.
Well, I don't know.
I mean, the, yeah, the possibility if you, as the Board of Aldermen, decide to cut their hours and say, we're going to let you only work 25 hours a week.
What if work levels and weather and all those prohibit them from working as much?
I guess, is it an average?
It's an average, as I understand it, of over 30 hours over the selected annual period.
Have you selected the annual period yet for the city?
We've used a calendar year.
So you're going to go for the 12-month annual. So if you go back and look at these positions over the last 12 months, do you know that they work on an average of 30?
I believe that they, I believe we did look at that when we first started looking at this, and they actually work more hours in the summer, which they work 30 in the winter, so over the year's average, they're actually going to be more than 30.
More than 30. Any other comments or concerns? As for roll call vote.
Alderman Dryer? Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Percy Castorley?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
No.
Alderman Clark?
No.
You guys are in a tough spot here.
That's when you make the big dollars.
Yeah, that's when you get paid a lot. And this is the first time this has happened to me since I've been mayor. I guess my concern, and I understand where Alderman Ock's coming from, my concern is that are we sending them a message that they're not important? And I think all of our employees are important. I'll vote yes on that, and the motion carried forward to three. I'm on item 14, Director of Operations, Finance Officer Terry Thorn.
Are we skipping nine, 10, 11, 12?
I'm in a hurry. I'm going back to item nine. Discussion of proposed I-70 interchange. I've got so much scribbling on my paper here and trying to work too...
Eric was heading out the door, and I didn't want to leave.
I'll introduce Eric Maniga from our area district engineer. We asked him to come tonight and maybe give a brief summary on what we're doing on the interchange. And I'll give you my comments here first. When I came on board, I think I had a conversation with Alderman Ock about this. I felt like the train was at the station, it was all loaded, all the research had been done, the engineering had been done, and it was ready to leave the station. At the end of a year's time, I felt the train started moving away from the station. So my input into the interchange has been very minimal. Most of the new board members here, their input's been pretty minimal. Outside of Alderman Clark and Alderman Flake, I think they're the only two that's been on board. So we've been at this going over two years now. We spent probably $116,000 of the public money on the project, and we're asking you to give us a little update on how we got to this point and where we're going from here.
All right, very good. I will go back a little bit, and back in July 2011, the conceptual plans for the interchange were completed by Crawford, Murphy and Tilly for the city. And then in August of that year, the city submitted an AJR request, which is an access justification request to federal highway. You have to do that anytime that you're adding access to the NHI system. In September of that year is when I came on board as an area engineer. So I kind of came in the middle, or part of, the beginning of this process. In the December 2011, Federal Highway gave conditional approval for the AJR, which is a great thing. It was conditional on can the city secure funding, and conditional on if there was any environmental issues. So the NEPA process still needs to go through. NEPA is the National Environmental Policy Act. So in December 2011, that was completed. And then from there to February 2013, the city and Michelle and Terry, they've been working hard on this, came up with a funding mechanism to come up with the cost share with the TDD. So that was submitted to Circuit Court, I believe, February of 2013. So in April, the city had submitted a draft cost share application to the district for us to review. We've gone through that. There are three items that we still need to address. The first one is, we are still looking from Boonslick, TAC, their Transportation Advisory Committee and Board, approval to move ahead with this project. And along with that, I think there will be some public outreach. You know, what do the citizens of Warrenton think about this project? Because I think that's important for not only the city, but as for MoDOT as well, is if we enter this partnership, you know, is this a project that we've got support to move ahead with? So that's one item that we still need to resolve. The second is a NEPA classification, and that will allow us a timeline for the city to determine when they can start the environmental process, how long that may take. Depending on that classification, it'll give us an idea of, is this going to take less than a year to go through the environmental process? Is it going to take more than a year? So basically, it'll give us a general idea of the timeline of that environmental, and then that'll kind of set the stage for when can we expect final plans to be done, right-of-way purchase, utilities moved, and construction to begin. The third thing... The third thing is, we still need MoDOT, and the city will still need to meet with our MoDOT leadership in the Northeast District to discuss how much of our district funds can we commit to this project? This is something different in the cost share process that didn't exist about a year ago. This was a change within MoDOT that with all the applicants that are, applications that are coming in for cost share projects, Central Office decided that the districts needed to commit funding to these projects as well. So that's something new and different, and that is something that we need to discuss. And funding is, is a big issue, especially for a rural district, because you're looking at, if I fund this cost share project, what other high, high priority need are we not gonna be able to fund in the meantime? So that's, that's a, the third thing that we need to visit about, and along with that is, how do you handle overruns, underruns? What services can MoDOT provide, such as, you know, we've got a small design staff, construction, right-of-way, and we've had preliminary talks already that we may not be able to provide a whole lot of assistance in those areas, and then you have to count forward in the cost, in the cost of the project. So, those three items, if we can get those addressed, we may be able to go to and submit the cost for a cost share in September of this fall, provided we get the, the recommendation from Boonslick. The NEPA classification, I've already submitted that to our Central Office. That should just take two, three weeks, somewhere in that ballpark, so that's not gonna be anything too major. And then after we get the Boonslick approval, then we'll meet down with our district leadership and, and look at what are the dollars we can commit. So if we, everything goes well, we'll assume that, we'll submit for a cost share in September of this year. The Cost Share Committee, they meet three times a year. Their next meeting is, next application date is actually June, which, we're not gonna be able to obtain that, so this fall will be the second one. But as we sit here today, in two thousand and sixteen, we have twenty million dollars available for cost share projects in the state of Missouri. So whatever projects are submitted in June, we'll know that amount will be somewhat less. In two thousand and seventeen, we have forty million dollars statewide for cost share projects, and then two thousand and eighteen, it's to be determined, but it's probably around forty million. So, the one thing I can say about cost share projects is we're seeing a lot of projects being entered statewide, a lot of communities trying to get needs addressed. Once they get submitted, there's a pre-approval team that will go through the application process, and that entails our right-of-way folks, planning, traffic, Chief Counsel's Office, finance officers, and they will go through that application. And if there's any questions that they have or outstanding issues, we'll address it before it goes to the committee. But that pre, pre-approval team, they'll make a recommendation looking at the project based on three criteria. That project, you know, what impact does that have on economic development? Number two, what's the transportation need for that project? And three, what's the public benefit? So they'll look at every individual project that comes in, rate, rate those projects, and then submit them to the Cost Share Committee. And the Cost Share Committee makes the final recommendation. Our committee consists of three folks, our chief engineer, our chief financial officer, and our assistant chief engineer. Everything goes well, gets approved, then we will sign an agreement within six months. The finances, all that gets lined out, and we, the dates are set, and, and we're rolling. So that is where we've been, where we are today, and hopefully where we're, we're heading. And Michelle, if I'm, I'm hoping I got that.
The only thing I have is we actually did start on the project in February two thousand and eleven. On March fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, the city signed the agreement with Crawford, Murphy, Tilly, October fifth. We met with Federal Highway to discuss everything, and December sixteenth is when we received approval for the access justification. We are closely working with MoDOT on this and trying to make sure we have everything completed to submit the best cost share application that we can.
With that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
One of my questions, and maybe Michelle knows, the Circuit Court has our transportation application. Have they released that yet?
Not that I'm aware.
The TDD.
Pardon me?
The TDD.
Yes.
The petition to declaratory judgment, petition for Transportation District. How that process works is essentially, we've received, I've been in contact with Bryce Gamblin from MoDOT, who is the, our MHTC, who's their counsel, one of their senior counsels. Bryce is okay with everything we've submitted. They've filed their answer. Right now, we, we are going to get an order signed by the judge setting forth the public hearing. If MHTC requires a public hearing, which is not necessarily require, or public notice for the hearing, which is not necessarily required under the statute, but that's up to MHTC. And we'll get an answer from Bryce on whether or not he's going to require that. And we have Judge Stanley Williams out of Franklin County is our special judge on it. We'll have the actual hearing on it, and then there'll be some dates set forth when the Transportation Development District will start collecting the money. And, well, actually, the ballot initiative for the TDD, and then when they'll actually collect the money, when they report that back.
I, I didn't, the, the competition for these funds is extremely great, it sounds to me. If, if you're talking about twenty million statewide?
In, in two thousand and sixteen, and generally, what we, they'll, they'll start with forty million. So, when we're looking at two thousand and seventeen, we've got forty million. And then as we've discussed with Michelle, just because cost share dollars are allocated in two thousand and seventeen, that doesn't mean you gotta wait till that date. You can always accelerate a project.
Okay.
Based on the financing that, that you have that's available.
Is, is all the cost shares fifty-fifty? Or is there, or the, does MoDOT use different percentages for cost share?
It, what I've seen, I haven't been around cost shares a whole lot, so I sat in at the last cost share meeting to get a feel for the type of projects that were being selected statewide. And there's nothing less than fifty percent that a community is able to, to submit. Some communities I've seen over fifty percent. And then as far as the district percentages, it varies, but you're looking probably in tend to twenty percent range of, of the project is coming from state funds or resources or a combination of both.
So twenty million statewide, or with, or with your district?
No, that's, in two thousand and sixteen, twenty million is still available statewide.
How many districts are there?
We have seven districts in the state of Missouri.
Simple math would say you have probably three thousand or less, unless you can make a case that you're more money.
There's, it's, it, it all depends, you know, on these cost share. We see a lot of cost share applications coming, like St. Louis, Kansas City. We're starting to see more from the rural areas, which I think is a great thing to see. It just, it's just a competitive, with our, with our budget that we're in, dollars are really tight. And it, it's hard to get projects like these accomplished with some, without some sort of cost share.
So, so without financing in place, probably no one's gonna get approved for a cost share application.
You, you need to have financing in place, and that's what the city has done. They've, they've got the TDD in, in the court, and that needed to be accomplished, and that's, that's a requirement to move forward. Because they don't wanna, in Jeff City, they don't wanna see, receive a bunch of cost share applicant, applications and go through the process and rank and approve them if, if funding isn't a possibility.
Who's the, who's the Boonslick TAC committee? Why'd you mention the first, the three things? Was the Boonslick TAC committee?
Yeah, their Transportation Advisory Committee.
And who is that?
It is a, it's a group of folks. Boonslick is, of course you know, is from Lincoln, Montgomery, Warren County. And there's about six or eight folks from each county.
So it's Etchard's group?
Yes.
And other groups that are similar to him in other counties?
No, it's all actually here at, with Boonslick, and we've got membership from each of the three counties, of six or eight folks that comprise this, this committee. And they come together and they bring forth the needs for, for our area down here. And that's the group that needs to look through this, and, and.
And they haven't yet.
They have not given final approval to move ahead. And the reason with that is, we are committing district dollars to this where we hadn't in the past. So it's, if we move this project forward, then there are other priorities that aren't gonna get done. So, as far as MoDOT's perspective, we weigh heavily what the RPCs have to say, their recommendations. And that's why we're wanting to see what their recommendation comes.
Alderman Ock, they, the TAC committee has taken this project to Boonslick Regional Planning Commission, and it is on their step of items to be done as a high priority, but it's not been moved up further because of the funding not being in place.
Who's, who's the TAC committee?
TAC committee's Transportation Advisory Committee.
Who are they?
And I sit on it for the city.
Okay.
The chief is actually on it for the city. It's made up of personnel from within cities, it's made up from business people, it's made up from farmers, just different individuals. And we sit and we discuss different priority, priorities in the community. So this has been on there, and it's been kinda sitting dormant because we didn't have funding in place with, we were told, when we met with Steve Etchard one time, that once we did have funding, this would be moved up. But then, MoDOT had the new requirement saying that the district had to put money into this. And so with that, now we have to go back to the TAC committee and notify them of where we are, and find out how much money they're willing to take from the other projects that Boonslick has to put towards this. So that's a new, a new thing that came through.
I'd like to see if you could give me the names of the people in TAC committee. I mean, there's only about six?
Six or eight per county, so you're looking.
Per county, yeah.
So there's twenty-four, twenty.
Twenty-four, twenty-seven.
Seven somewhere in there. And it may be on the Boonslick website, I would.
So on the financial side, what's the strategy that if, if the city goes forward and we don't get our share of funding, what's the strategy? We just collect sales tax longer? You have a project that costs twelve million, and so you were hoping to get three million from the cost share. And so if you, if you can't get the three million because it's not the priority for their funding, then the project goes sits dormant until we can raise the additional amount, or do we debt service more money?
I think that would be a discussion that the board would need to undertake, and it has not had that discussion at this point in time. They have not had the, what if the cost share is not approved, discussion to determine then, do we continue with the project and, as you say, let the TDD continue collecting the funds until they can do it? Or do we back away from the project until some point in the future? That discussion has not been had, that I'm aware of.
So we have done financial projections as to what we think the sales tax revenue would raise, how much debt would it support?
We have done that for the TDD with the assumptions that it is going to be a fifty-fifty cost share with MoDOT. We have not done the financial projection, assuming there is no cost share project.
How do we get to fifty-fifty if, he, he only has twenty thousand for the whole state? And let's, I, I've heard, this is a, what, twelve million dollar project?
Probably, yes.
So that'd be six, so where does the other six come from if you don't have six?
It is, say, say it's, it's around fourteen million. So if you say seven million's coming from the city.
Okay.
Then the remaining seven million is split up between our Central Office and our Northeast District. So, the Central Office told us a year ago that, hey, we're stopping funding the other fifty percent. The districts need to kick in some percentage. So, Central Office may kick in thirty-five, we may have to kick in fifteen percent. But we make up that, within MoDOT, we make up that other fifty percent.
Were you around when, when the engineering took place as, as for site selection? I guess, I guess my question is, was there a D's assessment as to where we, we put the overpass?
You know, I came in, you know, after, after that with these cost share projects, and, and Michelle probably, you know, she knows more about this, but you know, one of the things is you don't want interchanges back-to-back right there. You need them spaced out somewhat on the, on the interstate. So you need them spaced out, but as far as going whether west or east, I don't, I don't know if that would've made any difference. I know there was a report back in two thousand and six where there was a traffic study done for MoDOT on behalf of Warren County, looking at different transportation projects or needs that need to be addressed in the area. And at that time, they were talking about a Strax Church interchange. But as far as, you know, I think that was, the selection over here was probably just more on the, I mean, it's a cost share with the city of Warrenton.
And you're right, from what we learned by doing this is, if you're in a city, your interchanges can be within a mile apart. And if you're in a rural community, they have to be three miles apart. But because with talking to MoDOT and Federal Highway, they said, we're kind of a, a unique situation here. We're not rural, but we're not city, that we could be within like two miles of forty-seven, but we could not go any closer than that. So we had to be kind of where we're at. And if we would go to the east in that, there's not room to the east that there is to the west, because we have to build our interchange wide enough so that if they do come through, they were talking about the truck lanes, adding a third lane, that when we build this structure, MoDOT does not have to tear it down and rebuild it if they do do the truck lanes or the three lanes. So with that in mind, we had to find an area that we could put our ramps, make our interchange wide enough that wouldn't disturb a lot of homes, a lot of businesses, and that would give us the distance that we need. And with MoDOT and Federal Highway, they really liked where it's at, because on the north, where the service road kinda loops away, it seems to be, it gives us, and on the south, it's kind of a little more distance, it gives us more room through there. Whereas if we would try to go further to the east from like where, and by the mall and all that, we have a lot of businesses in there that we're disrupting. So that's kind of the reason that we, we picked this area.
Say that again. So if you go to the east, you're disrupting businesses?
Well, not east of forty-seven. I'm saying further east of, from where the interchange is, to forty-seven.
So that it's far enough out that you're not interrupting. I, I think, you know, when we ran for office, we certainly were led to believe several things. One is the train haven't left the station. And I think if you were at, I mean, the things that were held for the, for the election, that certainly was an impression you got. And there, and lied a lot of people, particularly business owners who are to the east of here, who have businesses, who want to know why the business, why the intersection wasn't on the east side of town, because they thought that's where the industrial park was, and it would certainly alleviate traffic off the industrial park. And they weren't, said they weren't, didn't have a conversation, or there was no public meeting, that they came so they could hear it. So that's the kinda stuff that, and I don't know if Karen was fed that, but I certainly was fed that as I was, as running for office.
I had a good understanding based on what she just said, because that's one of the things that I had asked about on before, so I mean, I mean, Michelle just gave the flat-out facts as to why the trouble to the east versus to the west.
To the west and to the east.
You know, why it's planned for the west, I mean, versus why did they plan it?
If you go too far east, it's out of city limits, too.
Out of city limits. It can't be too far away. You have to be able to have the on-ramps, the off-ramps, the turns, and be able to actually engineer the whole structure to fit the needs of the community, so. It makes complete sense where they're talking about putting it on the, on the west side.
So on the west, so with the change of the city boundary line, the interstate with the last election, does that get the city boundary to where the proposed intersection is? Or we're gonna have to go down the road a little farther?
The south side is in the city limits of Warrenton.
The south side is in the city limits of Warrenton.
Alderman Ock, if I can add a point to, as part of, one of the things that, one of the things that we have as a city as well for future annexation that has been part of our growth pattern, that's part of our master plan to kinda refer to, is when development, if development, if this overpasses bill, these, whatever development is, whether it be commercial or residential, the utility service that we provide, both water and sewer, obviously, that's been something that has kinda grown the city in the past, where in order for them to have, you know, fire hydrant pressure or fire suppression systems, or to have the sewer on a larger scale, typically, they would ask, can we annex into the city so we can receive city utility? So even though there may not be in the city right now, that is a utility service or an incentive for them to annex in the future in the city.
So does the city have the capacity to move utilities west? Guy?
That's on their RFQs for the engineering, for the upgrade of the plant, that's gonna be looked at.
So, city has the capacity financially to move water, sewer, out to that end where that intersection is?
We're, we're looking into the sewer part of it. We're looking into the sewer part of it tonight.
That's the engineering of the sewer?
Of the engineering of the wastewater treatment facility and the collection system.
So, well, I was, one of the things, I mean, I have like 30 little caps in here.
Alderman?
I know Jerry wants to go to bed early, so I won't cover all of them.
We are already, there is city services already on the south side to Highway MM. So we are there with city services on the south side.
With sewer services?
I believe we have sewer and water services on the south side to Highway M at this time. So we are just crossing the road, and there, there we go.
Okay. And it talked about in this, it's amazing how you can take the thick binder and pull out all the maps and come up with this piece of paper. So it talked about, the future growth of the city will be to the west. That was a pretty strong statement here. Do we have a comprehensive plan that lays that out, or is this just a guess?
I mean, the comprehensive plan absolutely looks towards growth along the interstate corridor.
When was the comprehensive plan done?
Well, it was, it was done quite a while ago.
Well, I think it was done when I was on the board.
Yeah, I think it was 2000.
And we comprehended it everywhere, you know, and it was really driven on where services could be taken at minimal cost, because we came to the conclusion, we can't go far to the south, because when you drop off and start going down the hill, it's impossible to provide sewer services and pump it back up and get to the station, so.
A lot of lift stations.
Yeah. And so, I don't know, I just, I saw that, and I thought, well, gee, I didn't know the comprehensive plan said that. I didn't know we had a current one, so.
Well, the comprehensive plan, I mean, obviously, Truesdale's been there. So growth to the east will always have some restrictions with Truesdale, and also Wright City's annexation to Strax Church. So there's obviously growth contemplated in the north, growth contemplated in the south, and growth contemplated in the west in the comprehensive plan. But eastbound has some restrictions just by their neighboring municipalities.
Now, I was wondering about this one comment in here, this is section 7.3, and I realize you don't have it. No public involvement meetings have been held at this point on this project. Public hearings will be held as progress, as the project progresses. And then it says, in talking to the stakeholders, no outstanding concerns have been risen. Who are the stakeholders? Aren't they the public, or is the stakeholders the, I don't understand what report I'm saying. I mean, we haven't had public hearings on this, right?
Correct. That I'm aware of.
We've discussed it in board meetings in the past, but we've not had just a public hearing to discuss this. But I have been out talking to, like, the businesses at the mall, and different residents, and talking to the mall. And it is definitely a factor that the businesses at the mall see as a detriment to the mall decline, not having easy access to get in and out. We actually had, probably two years, three years ago, which is one of the reasons we started on this, we had another company come in that looked at buying the mall and putting in over $10 million worth of investments at the mall. And they actually had engineering done, they had architects, John met with them, I know Fred met with them, Jim, you might have met with them back when they came in. And they had a whole thing laid out, ready to buy. They flew in from Arizona and met with us. And because we did not have an interchange or anything additional, they could not feel they could invest $20 million in a mall that was lacking when they go out there and talk to the business owners and hear that it suffers from lack of access. So I think that at the time was also one of the reasons that the Board of Aldermen decided to move forward to help generate the mall to be, although we know it will not be an outlet mall, to be revived and come back, because we could put access there.
What about the current, isn't there a new owner?
There's a new owner.
Have you talked to the new owner?
I have talked to the new owner, and we had the representatives from the mall, the new managing company come in here, they're Alexander Forrester. They are working, they're making calls diligently, trying to get businesses in there. And they have some prospects that they are working with. They are also working with sites themselves working, they're working with a semi-local agent who is making calls and going out there and trying to get people to come into the center. And they are also letting them know that we are having an AJR, that we're working on a cost share. And they stated to the mayor and the board that even just having the cost share approved, not having construction started, nothing, but having the cost share approved, will allow them to go out to major retailers and say, we have this interchange coming, we've got this center that's built, we can offer you an incentive on your lease to get in here, and you can get in here before the interchange is built and your lease goes up. And they are working on that. As we speak, they actually had someone, and several of them attended a conference in Las Vegas, it's called the International Shopping Center Council. And there was, I believe, about three of them that went with, in purpose, trying to get individuals into our center.
Yeah, I found the section about, this is the report, it says, "Strong western growth is depicted in this map that shows the strong western growth from 2000 to 2009." I mean, if you, in Warrenton, you don't see strong western growth, you see strong growth north, you see strong growth south. So it was a little bit, I didn't know where they were getting their information.
Is your intent that we're going to discuss this whole time?
Well, I think one of the other things why we had, we decided to build the overpass down here to the west was, the fire department in the ambulance district, they had some problems with emergency services. If something would happen to the overpass out here, it was closed down, they either have to go to Strax Church to get across, or up to Pendleton. And they were wanting something a lot closer for emergency services to get from one side of town to the other. And that was an important concern.
Did the city council talk about the possibility of running a road north and east? In other words, so you're going to loop around, if you've got an intersection sitting out here, yeah, they can get to the overpass, but if they have to come back, they're blocked at 47 again. So was there a discussion when the council discussed it, if we put this intersection east, we want to project out building a road that goes north and then back east, so you could almost loop the area, or is that not, was that not considered?
Yes, that was part of the plan is, is a phase two after the interchange is built, to have a road that actually goes to W and to north 47, so that they can loop. So even if there's a, an accident on 47 a little bit north, and it's backed up, that they could go down and use that and loop north, just like it will connect to Highway MM, which will go down to 47 on the south.
Let me just switch topic, and I, sorry, Jerry. Let's talk about the financing side in the tax district. So my understanding, and I'm just repeating this because this is what I've been told, is this tax district is basically made up of homes that are along Highway 70, anywhere from 30 or less registered voters. And they're the ones that impose the district, and the city collects the taxes. Is that how it works?
That's what the statute requires, yes, the residents.
And so when this issue becomes to the taxpayers, it's not going to come to the taxpayers as a whole, it's going to come to those 30 people. So in essence, they will be authorizing the city to impose a tax on everybody. Is that correct?
No, it's not on everybody, it's a sales tax.
Well, it's a sales tax on everybody who shops there.
The retailers in the district will have a tax imposed by the district, based on the vote of whether or not to impose the tax of the residents within the district. That's what the statute sets forth for a transportation development district.
So I've talked to several people who live out in the area, and they're still a little confused in terms of, you know, they don't understand. So I think we need to do a little bit more educating when we get closer. I mean, I, you know, I'm not opposed to the intersection. I think we need an intersection desperately, someplace, I don't, you know, it's not a priority where. But I think that the general public needs a little bit more education as to what's going on as it relates to that. And particularly if we're going to impose a real estate, or a sales tax on everybody in the community.
I think the whole process is, we can only do one thing at a time. So we're in a process mode. So once we get this process done, then we go to that public mode. But you don't go to the public mode until you've gotten this done here. Is that correct?
Yes and no. When we were looking at the TDD, I physically went to homes all along the I-70 corridor from the mall to 47, and north and south on 47, and knocked on doors, and went and tried to talk to people. I talked to individuals and tried to explain what the TDD was, what it would be used for, and let them know that it were basically, it's, you know, a sales tax that would be increased, and informed them that if they shop on Winsfield Parkway, they're already paying one. And that hopefully by doing this, it will help spur the development in our community and bring additional retailers here, because we're having another interchange and bringing additional things. And most of them didn't even realize that when they shop in Winsfield on the Parkway that they're paying. I had several people that literally shopped there that day, went and pulled out their sales tax, or sales receipt, and looked at it, and were shocked. And so I've told them what we're looking to do when I did this. And I was out nights till 8 o'clock at night, 7 o'clock at night, knocking on doors, because that's where people were home, trying to talk to people and educate them of, this is for the second interchange, took a picture, this is where we're looking to go, this is how we're looking to fund it, this is why we're looking to fund it this way. So it's been something that I have been working on.
You didn't tell those people they shouldn't be shopping in Winsfield?
I'm sorry.
You didn't tell those people they shouldn't be shopping in Winsfield?
I informed them they shouldn't be shopping in Winsfield, that they should shop in Warrenton, and that if they-
Now, another issue that's come up is, have you talked to the realtor, or the retail businesses in the district? And are they aware that there's going to be an additional tax? Have you talked to them?
I have talked to, I talked to Walmart, and that's-
What was their response to it?
He did not, the manager there did not seem to have an issue with it.
Okay. Is, how big is the proposed district? So let's just take it for instance. And I don't know, this won't happen. What happens if Walmart were to move outside the district? Let's say they decided that they want to move their, out over by the interchange. So they didn't like this anymore, they're going to set up their operation over by the other interchange. Then it's outside the district, or is it in the district?
If they were on the south side, it would be in the district. If they were on the north side at this time, it would not be in the district.
So then we lose a substantial part of our revenues.
Well, you, I mean, I think, Alderman, that you're kind of, that proposal, hypothetical, is difficult to look at, because you have to look at their development costs, number one, can they, would they have city water, would they be able to develop the land?
I said it was a hypothetical.
Yeah, annexing into the city or becoming a part of the district, because the district can be expanded. So, you know, hypothetically speaking, could they do that? Absolutely. Walmart can decide to pick up and leave tomorrow.
Hypothetically, though, couldn't, wherever they, wherever they land, if they go out to Pendleton and put a Walmart in, couldn't Pendleton draw up a TDD covering it? And you can't, I don't know how you escape from it.
You could. I mean, I think one of the things for Walmart, one of the reasons they're anchored there is the investment in the infrastructure for the outer road that this board independently went and made with them in that agreement, to about a million dollars in city funds to build that access. And the second thing is, their, their piece of property that owned has a very unique zoning, because it's not just the Walmart, but they also own all those little strip malls that they lease out, that they have a lot of freedom under our zoning code to, you know, lease and rent those out, and basically operate, you know, somewhat independently within the city. So, you know, is it possible? Absolutely, it's possible. There would be some things, some decisions that I couldn't, you know, hypothesize whether it would be a good business decision or not.
Alderman, not to cut you short, but are you interested in a, more of a work session type thing?
No, I'm fine. I just wanted to get some of this out to the public, because some of the comments that I made, or comments to people in the public, have expressed concern or wonder about, you know, for example, the idea of a business moving out of the district, that was a real possibility up in other areas, up in the, I understand up in the Troy-Winfield area, some of the discussions were, well, you know, if we don't like this, we'll move our businesses out. So I mean, those are the kind of questions to people. I, we can, we can stop it so you can go to bed.
Any other questions for Eric? Eric, I thank you for coming and sharing your information with us. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you. And anytime you want me to come by, just let me know, and I'd be glad to.
We'll take you up on that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other concerns or questions? We'll move on, if not hearing from anyone, if I don't skip over something. I'm on item 10, eminent domain discussion. I think one of the Aldermen had your question. We have a discussion on that?
Yes.
I'm ready to listen.
You know, city Warrenton just basically went through the same process as the city of Columbia did as it relates to the enhanced enterprise zone. And they stopped their zone. We're not going to stop our zone, I anticipate a vote tonight. But one of the concerns the residents have are this issue of eminent domain. And I think we could sit here, and I spent a lot of time reading state statutes and opinions, and I think there's value in the city adopting a similar ordinance that, that was voted on by the city, the people who live in the city of Columbia. And that basically would prohibit the city from using eminent domain for the purposes of taking private property and giving it to another private property owner. And that's the thrust of what's there. So what I asked is that the draft of the ordinance that they had proposed be given to the Aldermen so they could look at. And we certainly can argue, is it legally necessary? Because I think there's people in the state who would say, it's not legally necessary, because the state statute, you know, prohibits it. But it's, it's not terribly clear in the state statute, and you probably could find people from a legal standpoint who would argue both sides of it. And I think as, some of the concerns that have been raised by the residents, these issues of eminent domain do come up in our community. We're talking about Walmart, they came up, if you ask Mary Evans, who owned the property that's sitting on the road that goes into the Walmart, if eminent domain was a part of her life. And I think she'd certainly say that it was there. Fortunately, the city didn't have to use it. But I think we, sometimes we feel like we're immune to those discussions, because we're sitting out here in a rural everybody, and everybody knows everybody. But these things have come up in the city before. And so what I'd like to do is ask the Aldermen to take a look at this, put their thoughts together, and certainly if city councillor has his input, and then see if we can get on the agenda for the next meeting, and see if we can move in the direction of a motion, if this is what the council wants to do.
My question, when, when I read that was, if they are, the city of Columbia voted to amend their charter, since we're not a chartered form of government, I don't know that we can, I don't know how we do that.
Well, but we've been ordinances, right?
Well, I, I think Alderman Cornell brings up a good point, is, as a charter form of government, their authority is derived from their charter, without going into a constitutional discussion. Derived from their charter under state statute. We are governed by the statutes of the state of Missouri, which is where we derive our authority from. I think, I mean, I like the language, it's well-written, the language of the charter amendment that's in there. However, I did want to advise the board and say, they have a different form of government, so when the board of, the city council of the city of Columbia passed that ordinance, that ordinance was put to the vote of people, and their constitutional or their charter was amended.
Right.
Which basically makes it, if you want to amend it back, you have to go to a vote of the people. Now, the issue with the city of Warrenton would be, you know, the general rule under the case law in the state of Missouri is, a city doesn't have to follow their own rules. And additionally would be, not only could this council, or could this board say, well, we're not going to follow our ordinance that says that, which, you know, it's a different debate whether or not that's good, or, you know, good politics. And then secondly is, another board can come and repeal it, which, in the city of Columbia, the voters approved it, the voters would have to vote to repeal it. So I do think that, and I express this to Terry, I do think there is a value to passing an ordinance that would express an intent. It may not necessarily be binding on the city's future action or on this board, but I do think that it, you know, the ordinances are not restricted to, under the statutes, you don't have to restrict your ordinances just to legislative. The city has many ordinances on the book that expresses an intent or will of the Board of Aldermen. So I do think there's a value. Now, does that mean that a future board, or even this board, could not kind of go into that gray area, as you said, Alderman, for eminent domain? They still could. They could ignore their ordinance, or they could proceed to repeal that ordinance. But it does, I think, really put the intent on the books, if you will.
Yeah, and I think it puts the intent on the book, and I think it makes the process of doing that a little bit more public, a little bit more exposed. And I think one of the concerns is, if this becomes an issue, and some future board sees something that they want to do immediately, well, we'll do it in a special session, where people don't have a time to respond to it, respond to it. And by having it on the books, by having it as an issue, I think it allows the taxpayer to, or the property owner, to have some feeling that there will be an opportunity to address the council and bring up their concerns. And that's why I see the value, is not so much from a legal perspective, but more from a political, public relations perspective.
Absolutely. And there's ordinances we have as far as, for housing, certain ordinances regarding future zoning of the city, or present zoning, prospective growth that express an intent. So, you know, I definitely think there's a value, and that's something that ordinances are allowed to express as well.
So I'm assuming the rest of the council is not in a position where they want to take an action, you want to think about it? You see Fred shaking his head. So can we put this on the agenda for next meeting? And I will make a motion that we do this, and you guys think about the discussion.
Does anyone have any further discussion on tonight, or?
Not tonight, I would want to see.
And I'm going to ask Alderman Flake and Alderman Clark, I mean, they're- And I'm going to ask Alderman Flake and Alderman Clark, I mean, they're, they're the senior people on the board, has the City of Warrenton ever, ever taken any property with eminent domain?
Not in my 18-year-
Not in your 18-year-
Came pretty close, though.
I, I-
Very close, which our time serves, Alderman Ock is a senior person also.
And he's awesome.
But he's been going well.
No, I think we came pretty close on the Wal- I mean, for those of you, yeah, the Walmarters, for those who don't recall, at the time, the Walmart had their small store and they wanted to go to the super center, one of their requirements for the city to do this was they wanted to have multi entrances into the property. And so, obviously, they have South Service Road as an entrance, but they wanted an entrance off Highway 47. And the property owner where they wanted to go through was Mary Evans, her and her husband, many, many, many years ago, bought this property as investment property. So it wasn't their home, it was their investment property. So the council tried to work, Walmart tried to work with them as well, do like-kind exchanges, and we'll do this, that, and the other, and we never got to the point of eminent domain. On the plus side, I think, when they sold the property, they got the highest per square footage cost of ground in the City of Warrenton, and I don't know if it's still the benchmark, but it certainly set the benchmark at the time. And so, it was a good process to go through where the property owner, in this case, on the investment property, did get an economic benefit from it, and, and we were able to, to meet Walmart's requirements for the super center. Because if you recall, also at the time, the outlet center was starting to show signs of going away, and I, and I said at the time, because I pushed hard on this issue, is that if, if the Walmart, if Walmart's super center doesn't come in and the outlet center goes away, the city's going to be in a world of hurt for providing services. So it was a real critical issue that could have led there to eminent domain, unfortunately it didn't. That's the history of it.
So what you're asking-
Like you say, it was close, but they didn't use it.
Yeah, it was very close.
This, we put on the agenda for next meeting?
Right.
Are you, are you wanting Attorney Gravel to draw up an ordinance?
If he would do so, I would be great.
Yeah, I mean, I actually think the language from Columbia's charters would look great, and I'll put it in, I'll put some whereas clauses to say this is to express the intent of this Board of Aldermen and, you know, hopefully for the future of the city, so I can, we can put that together.
And any, any of Board members have any issues with that?
Let's see what it looks like.
See what it looks like, any votes from there?
Thank you.
I'm moving on to item 11, I didn't skip anything, I did it. Approval to hire seasonal employee. See if I can call that up. Joseph Brooks, umpire, what do we need to know about Joseph?
It's a seasonal position on a per game basis, they get $20 if they're behind the plate, 15 if they're at a base, and it's just an addition to our list of seasonal umpires and officials for baseball, softball.
I need a motion.
So moved, second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Cornell to hire Joseph Brooks, umpire official on a per game basis. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. I got item 12, approval to hire Joyce Scipione, am I pronouncing that right? As a recreational secretary to rated squad hours per hour. Who wants, who knows about Joyce?
I can tell you what I do know, this is the candidate to replace the recreation secretary position. She is available to start on May 28th and is a local Warrenton resident.
Thanks for saving me the-
You're a local-
Thanks for saving me the time of asking this question. Now, she's, she's replacing the recreation secretary that we hired about a month ago?
Yes.
Let me ask, who's the chair of the personnel committee?
John Clark.
John Clark.
You know, I got a phone call about hiring her, and I felt really uncomfortable, not with her, not with the procedure, because having watched some of this TV and the discussion about local versus non-local, you know, I didn't know where the rest of the council was on this. Let's say if she had been somebody who didn't live in the city, you know, I was going to say, well, I'm not going to approve it so that the council can discuss it. So I don't know where the board is at on this whole process, because this is really not the way it was done when I was here years ago, you know, where the, the board as a whole would make a decision as opposed to, or be involved in the process more as opposed to the Personnel Committee making a recommendation to the board, which in essence, what we're doing is when we say, when she calls up and the three of us say, fine, we're making a recommendation to the board. And then I hear in meetings where John's upset, or John's upset because, well, was this person a city member or living in the city, were they given a fair chance?
Community, community member, community member.
Community member. So, I mean, is this what the board's comfortable doing?
I, I was chair of the Personnel Committee last time, and I don't have a problem with the, the process. I believe that, I believe that I probably handled it differently than it's been handled in the past, in that when they asked me for approval of that recommendation, I would not give approval of that recommendation until I came in and reviewed the paperwork and the application of their, of the staff's recommendation, as well as the other finalists that were in that. And there were a couple of times where I did not approve, did not vote to approve that as the Personnel Committee, and it did come before the, the full board. So, I think the full board always has the final say.
That's true.
So I, I didn't have a problem with, with the process, and I think I'm probably one of the most critical, take the most critical look at the hiring process sometimes.
I mean, because I have hardly said to the mayor, well, if I'm on the Personnel Committee, I'm going to deny everything so it comes to the board for a detailed discussion.
That works.
So, and I just heard John say to me, well, I want more information. So I don't know what to do.
And I'm not on the Personnel Committee now, but I called Brandy knowing this was coming up when I saw it on the agenda, and I came down, I think Friday, and looked at, everything that I looked at when I was on the Personnel Committee, I just took the time to come down and, and look at it so that I could make an educated vote.
And as John being chairman of the committee, he certainly has the privilege of setting in on the interviews of those people, if he wants to do that, the whole committee can set in when he interview those candidates, but-
But that's all critical, yeah.
Yeah, and we're trying to expedite things where, where we don't tie the whole board up, we let, let individual committees kind of do the grunt, grunt work, and then they bring a recommendation to the board. Does that make sense to you?
Well, my, yeah, I, I was, they tried to notify me or get ahold of me on Friday, and I was up in the Elsberry area where there's no phone service for my cellphone anyhow. And on Monday, I, I called in and just was given a brief part of the information. So, and I did ask a little bit on what the process really was, because I wasn't familiar with it. And at least we're not hiring somebody, approving somebody who's already been working for us. I do have issues with that sometimes.
So next time they call me, I should say, well, what did John say?
I didn't say that.
John, he's got to quit leaving town, so he's available, so we don't know what he said, because we couldn't find him.
There's a reason why I leave phone service.
If there's no more discussion, entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approval of, to hire Joyce Scipione for recreational secretary at $12 per hour. Any further discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Am I pronouncing her name right?
I believe-
I think so. Skip.
All right, item 13, we scratched, item 14, I tried to get to you earlier, so we'll go back to item 14, Terry Thorne, Director of Operation Funding Management.
My first item for you is a question related to the upcoming sales tax holiday in August. Every year at this time, we consider whether or not we want to continue to participate in the sales tax holiday. The dates for this year will be August 2nd through August 4th. If we choose to continue to participate, we take no action. If you choose not to continue to participate, then it is necessary for us to put together an ordinance and pass that saying that we will not participate, and then we need to notify the state. So, the question is whether you want to continue to participate or not with the sales tax holiday.
I make a motion that we participate in the tax-free holiday this August 2013, Friday, August 2nd through Sunday, August 4th.
Did we do this last year?
Then we can discuss.
Have we always done it?
Yes.
Well, we don't really need a motion.
You don't need it, you don't need to take any action.
We can just move to the next item.
Well, then, good, good.
We just move to the next item.
Okay. We can do that. I know, that's what I was trying to-
Yeah, I think we should participate. So you just need verbal, verbal for the board?
As long as everyone's okay with that, then we need to do nothing.
John?
Good.
Jim? We're good.
Okay. The next item is the report from the Tourism Commission meeting on May 14. The commission met on that day and actually reviewed their budget and made their budget recommendation, which you all will be reviewing when you review the full budget. But the recommendation that's before you this evening is two requests, one that is on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce for $100. Tourism had approved the vinyl change for Festival of Fun, and actually, the amount that was approved was $100 less than the actual cost in error. So Tourism recommended approval of the remaining $100, which is the vinyl change for the Festival of Fun billboards. The other request was from the City of Warrenton for the reimbursement for the 20 hours a week of the event coordinator for this past year in the amount of $18,177.
So these are really funds that we have custody over, we're just, that's just authorizing your approval to move on to agenda.
They make the recommendation and then you all authorize the distribution of the money.
So moved.
Well, the, the event coordinator, haven't we eliminated that position?
We don't call the condition, the position event coordinator currently, I think we've changed the title of that.
Recreation director?
No, it's really the, the second-in-command.
The one currently held by Jared?
Yes, and I can't think off the top of my head what the new title is, but it used to be event coordinator.
And, and I understand, this is for the previous year?
Correct.
So this is part of his salary? Is that what we're?
This is not actually him, this is for-
It's on the back, it's listed three employees.
The past period, it is made up of Lindsay DeGraff, Jennifer Hoffman, and partially Doty for the first part of the year.
Okay, I see, I got you.
I didn't see that either.
Thank you.
So the total amount of reimbursement is the $18,177?
And that is the budgeted amount in the tourism budget.
In the tourism budget, okay. Got a motion on the floor from Alderman Ock, I need a second.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the tourism recommendations in the amount of $18,177. Am I correct on that, Melody?
$18,277.
200, because we've got the $100 for the chamber vinyl billboard, $18,277. Roll call, please.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Tourism is looking to do some unique things in their new budget for the upcoming year, so it will be interesting to see some of the changes that they're looking toward in their budget. So I think you'll be surprised.
How big of a budget do they have?
Their revenue is about $120,000 a year.
That's basically the motel tax, right?
Yes, yes.
Bed and breakfast, motel, all that.
My next item on your agenda is a discussion of the department head attendance at these meetings. There has been some discussion among the department heads in the past, and actually, this really was brought to mind during the orientation session with the new Aldermen. My question to you is, do you think it's necessary to continue to have all the department heads here to the end of the meeting, once they've presented their portion of the agenda? Or would you be comfortable with allowing them to leave as their portions of the agenda are completed?
I would personally, I think that it is wise to send them on as soon as they are done, with the understanding that there may occasionally be times when I want Michelle to stick around, because I'm going to have a question pertaining to guys' agenda, I can see where they might overlap at times, but you and I had this discussion a couple weeks ago, and I think it's efficient use of employee time to get the information out and get them down the road.
I'm in agreement with that.
Well, I mean, we had this discussion many years ago, and the board felt they should all stay, I don't know why, but that was the majority then, but I can certainly see them, as we did that night, we did the orientation, we just asked them to go home, they were done.
My question is, are you going to rotate the agenda?
Yes.
That's what their question was, too.
Actually, they've already had that discussion, and there was an ensuing discussion about Melody being in control of the agenda and what kind of chocolate it might take to get you moved up. The plan would be to do a rotation so that it just rotates around, so that it's fair to everyone.
I think that's fair.
Any concerns on this end?
No.
I think we're fine with that.
Great, thank you very much.
Let them go.
Then my next item is the dental insurance renewal. The plan is through principal insurance through the Scott Agency. Increase this year is 6% for the employee only, 6.7% for the family. This also is an insurance that's bid out next year along with our health insurance. So, my hope would be if we can go to the broker situation, that this could be done by the broker as well next year.
And I'm sorry that I don't have this information, what, does the city pay the entire portion of the premium for the employee and the dependents?
No. Dental insurance is typically paid, all of it by the employee. The only component that is paid by the city for any of the dental insurance is when an employee has single coverage on their health insurance, they are allowed $50 a month toward other coverages, whether it's an Aflac product, or this product, or one of the miscellaneous other insurances. So, they can choose to use that toward the dental, they can choose to use it toward Aflac, but none of the dental, other than that, is provided by the city.
You know, I looked, I was shocked at the rate increase, I was shocked at premiums. I mean, we're, where I work, we're a comparable-sized organization, and we're paying 22 bucks for an individual. Now, the benefit package may be different, but usually dentals are pretty close, what you do is you discuss networks when you have these conversations. And I was a little surprised to see the increase in the rate, so hopefully competitive bidding next year will really help.
I would hope so. It's, it was a 6% increase last year as well, so we've seen, I remember when our premium was $21, but it's been a while ago since we've seen that. So, maybe by having a broker who can shop it in more different ways would be beneficial to get that done.
So we, we need a motion to approve the increase?
Yes, please.
And we really are kind of locked in until next year till we bid them out?
Correct.
So moved, second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, second, I'm sorry, motion made by Alderman Ock, right, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the 6.7% increase in dental insurance. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
And I don't have anything under operational updates for this evening.
Okay, I'm going to Michelle Schlinter then.
Good evening, Mayor and Board, tonight I have for you billboards. We have gone out and requested information on billboards, as we do, and we've had four companies that submitted information, however, two of them did not meet the bid spec, so we have for you Lamar and Corleair, and it is our recommendation to go with Lamar since they are the low end.
I'm going to ask-
I'm going to ask the question I asked last year, and I don't know if it's, do we get twenty thousand dollars worth of value out of the billboards? I mean, I don't know how you quantify.
Or to measure it.
I, I'm sure there is a way that people measure the effectiveness of it, but sometimes you wonder does, I don't know, what are we, what are we using it to advertise?
We use them to advertise the citywide yard sale. They were used to advertise Auto Fest. We used to use them for Catch the Glow. We have put up in the past, are open for business for economic development. The Chamber's currently utilizing them for their celebration, their birthday celebration Festival of Fun. We could put the farmer's market on them. So they're usually used for special events and hometown Christmas. When there's not a special event going on, we have what we call a, like a generic Warrenton one. We had stop, stay, return in Warrenton. We had open for business, just different things like that that we put up there.
I think the Tourism Commission feels like there is a benefit, because they're the ones who really fund this, and particularly since they've opened this up to be used for some of the outside entities. We were contacted by the Fair Board and with a request to be able to utilize that and basically rent it from Tourism for the fair. They felt like that was a real plus, because it allowed them to have some high-traffic boards without having to have a long-term contract. So I think the Tourism Committee feels like there truly is benefit because of their location as people approach the city.
And this is a recommendation by Tourism?
The funding of it is by Tourism.
It's part of their hundred and some thousand dollar budget.
Yes, it is part of their budget.
Could you go back and explain a little bit, like you said, we rent the board, we were talking about renting the board to the Fair Board?
Yes.
How's that work?
We've never done it before, but the plan for this year would be to take whatever the monthly rental would be, and then they obviously would have to pay for their vinyl change, and so it would simply be whatever that month of funding was, would be collected from the Fair Board and go back into the Tourism Commission's files.
Are we, is the, are we being consistent with the rental? If the Fair Board is paying for a rental of the billboards, are other organizations that are using it paying for it? The Festival of Fun, the WDA?
No. If an entity would come and ask for funding from Tourism and be approved, like the Festival of Fun?
Okay.
It certainly could be. I think there would be difficulty with getting approval from Tourism to pay for the fair, because one of the conditions is that the entity cannot make a profit.
Okay.
So
Okay.
I believe it would be difficult to get Tourism to pay for the cost, but they were willing to allow them to utilize the board for that month period.
I just want to make sure there was an articulable reason why we would charge some organizations and not others.
This would be the first time that they've ever allowed someone to utilize the board that wasn't something either for the city benefit or funded through Tourism.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve twenty thousand five hundred and sixty dollars for two billboards through Lamar.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the two billboard bid from Lamar Advertising in the amount of twenty thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. Any other discussion on the issue? Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. I'm on item sixteen, for planning and zoning director, Jack Tamp. Jack?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. What I have for you tonight is a request to revise sidewalk locations at the Field of Dreams Phase Two subdivision. This is not a request to eliminate any sidewalks along any street frontage, it's simply to move the sidewalks from one side of the street to the other. And Mr. Cannon from Cannon Builders is here this evening if you have any specific questions for him.
What's the reason for moving it again? Would you, I sort of read what you said, but I'd like to hear it.
The purpose of moving it is we have a house, I'm not sure what you have as far as it goes.
I went, I drove to the area and I was trying to figure out.
There's one particular street, the ground is elevated higher on one side than it is on the other side.
Right.
We've constructed a home on the high side. What it has done is created a very steep driveway, and when we did that, we did not anticipate, did not know about the, when we poured the sidewalk on that side of the street, that the sidewalk had to be pretty much level. So what it has done, when you pull off the curb, you go up about two feet, flattens out, and then goes up again. And low-profile cars can't cross without dragging. And so what we'd like to do is move the sidewalk from that side of the street to the other side, which is level, and then we'll take that sidewalk out and we'll be able to make this, this driveway straight, and you won't have that dip in it. The footage of overall sidewalk is roughly the same. You may even be getting a little bit more sidewalk on the other side, but it's strictly due to the grade of the lot, and this grade continues down this side of the street, and the next lot will have the same problem, not quite as bad as the one we have here.
And this is the first street where you turn into the subdivision. You come off Highway forty-seven, you make a left, and it's the first right.
And you go down to the bottom of the hill, and this house sits on the right there.
It's a lot section.
We've had a couple of different people that have shown an interest in it, but they, we just can't get them past that sidewalk. And we actually have two houses, the same house, the other one is a used home, and we are currently under contract with those, and those people had the choice for the same price. They chose the used house because of the driveway. So if we can move the sidewalk, we can take it out, take the dip out of the driveway, it's still going to be a steep driveway, but it's still drivable.
I drove by there the other, I don't know how you would get most vehicles up there, it's
I drive a Suburban, and you have to kind of come into it at an angle to get it into it. So it's difficult.
I drove out, and I also had some conversations with Jack the other day. My only, I think that in the end, switching the sidewalks to the other side makes sense for that location, and it still offers, it still gets you from point A to point B. My only concern is, on the other side of the street, there is one existing home.
There is.
And they obviously take great care in their landscaping, and, and I understand that the sidewalk is not going to go onto their personal property, but it's property that they're maintaining. And I'm, I'm wondering if they're going to, if when we authorize this, they're not going to be a little bit upset of, you know, we built on this, this side of the street, bought on this side of the street because we didn't want a sidewalk in our front yard. And I know the possibility is always there to put a sidewalk there, but if the plan wasn't to put a sidewalk there, I don't necessarily think they have a legal standing for that, but
I understand your concern. They are on a corner lot, they would, the sidewalk would only be put on one side of the street, would not go around both sides.
Okay.
We would obviously have to discuss it and tell them, you know, that we need to do that. I, we built the home.
Right.
So it's a past client of ours.
Okay.
And we did not have any difficulty through that process, so I don't anticipate that being a problem. I think we can get through that.
Seems, seems like what you're proposing here makes sense.
It's really, doesn't change anything. I mean, it's strictly moving from one side to the other. It's correcting an issue that we have with this particular house.
Is there a recommendation? There was no recommendation on this?
I tried to present you all the facts and let the board make the recommendation. Personally, I do not see a problem with, with moving it to the other side of the street. I definitely think it will help them with the situation that they have right now.
Okay, so that's your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Jack, and I, I don't mean to interrupt. The one, the other thing that I discussed with you, having just recently been, having a discussion with a member of Planning and Zoning and over varying from the sidewalk plan, I asked you whether or not this would be going front of Planning and Zoning Panel for a recommendation. You told me that generally, a revision like this does not go for a recommendation by P and Z Board.
In the eighteen months I've been with the city, minor modifications to plans just comes to the board. Specific examples out of Villas at Hall Farm, they requested adding additional lighting. The board approved that. They had, requested adding additional playgrounds and sidewalks a month or two later. The board approved that. When they did come and ask to add storm shelters, the board recommended that P and Z looked at it first and make their recommendation, then it went back to the board for approval. So either way
You don't, it's just
It's fine, but for minor modifications like this, typically it would come to the board first, because they're not changing, quote, the subdivision plan, they're not changing any lot layouts. Code requires sidewalk on one side of the street, they're not eliminating any section of street frontings that would not have sidewalks, it's just simply moving from one side to the other to help, help out a situation.
You are going to take the sidewalk out that's there now?
Yes.
You have, have to take that out. I, I agree with Alderman Cornell. I think it would behoove you to make contact with that first house to
We're most definitely, yeah, we obviously have to
They're on board with that.
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve the proposal to move the sidewalk from the south side of Wrigley Circle to the north side of Wrigley Circle in the depicted area.
I hear a second.
I'll second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Casterly to approve the request to revise the sidewalk location at Field of Dreams subdivision from the north
From the south
South to the north, north side. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed likewise? Motion carried six zero.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
And now you're not required to sit here the rest of the night.
The board is not offended with the public views after they make their
Maybe it's better
I'm ready for the chief of police report. Motion to report.
Good evening, Mayor and Board.
Good evening.
I do have the April two thousand thirteen motion report. Nothing especially remarkable there. We've had five participants in the ride-along program, so seeing a little bit of improvement there.
That's cool.
Yes, it's very cool.
Were they board members, or were they residents?
They were not board members.
They counted you three times.
I was going to say, I didn't go, did I?
If I could direct your attention to page number four, that's an addition. At the last month's meeting, you asked for drug-related incidents specifically to be listed. Use of the nine from April that we had, actually six arrests for marijuana possessions, two for heroin, and then we had a situation where the subject of the call admitted using several drug categories. So obviously, it is, it is an ongoing issue.
Thanks for adding that.
Yeah, no problem. Any questions about the motion report?
Are you going to talk about the ordinance violations and that stuff? Is that part of your report that you're talking about?
I can.
Well, I, I was just looking at these and just, I was just kind of going over them. I just think there's a lot of things in our community that, that we need to address, and I just, I just want to make sure that, that our compliance officers are truly doing full-time duty on trying to clean things up.
But, yeah, they absolutely are. You know, with all the rain that we've gotten, obviously, we're into
The ground.
Knee-high rain season.
Right.
And, you know, they've, they've been running around trying to stay on top of that, so that's really kind of the focus until the growth curtails a little bit. But, you know, again, I'll be happy to entertain anything that they miss and send that along to them so that they can address it, and certainly anybody in the public who has anything that they see that's amiss, they can certainly give me a call and we'll make sure that it's addressed.
And when we see solid waste, that's basically trash in the yard, is what we're talking about?
Trash.
Refrigerators.
You know, couches, refrigerators, mattresses, all, all of those types of things.
And Alder Person Casterly, I want to make a point here. The, we have a process called abatement that we utilize, where the city will go on private property after a due process hearing in order to remove the nuisance, whether it be tall weeds, or refrigerator solid waste, burned-out houses, or anything like that. And so what I would encourage you, to encourage your constituents, is let us know early if there's a problem, because to begin that process, there are some statutory requirements we have to meet in order to actually go on and take action on those properties. So, so occasionally, we'll get notification of a, of a problematic property, and the board is waiting for some results to happen. So the sooner we get notice, the sooner we can get that process and really try to alleviate that. Especially with the tall weeds, because they'll get knee-high, and it's like, well, if we knew they were over twelve inches before, then we can alleviate it.
And these are calls that are made directly to your department. Right?
The tall weeds are a problem. I mow my grass regularly, and I got tall weeds. It's been difficult to give it mowed this year.
It's hard to say that.
And you, and you can tell the houses that are vacant, you know, are being foreclosed upon, and nobody's mowing the yards there.
Right.
So they got their hands full. But I think you have to be patient with some of the elderly people during this difficult time. Sometimes they just can't get it all done.
Absolutely.
As much rain as we've had, I've had parts of my yard that I can't even walk in, much less mow.
Sure, much less get them worked.
And I think, I think we all know what the realistic
Sure.
...complaint is. I mean, right now is
I do have a question. When we talk about tall weeds, I've been contacted in the past about a, a residence that lets their grass get knee-high and then they mow it. Is there any provision for somebody who continually lets their, their grass, their weeds get tall, and then they only take action once they're, they're contacted?
I don't, I don't think there is.
How do, how do you prevent that from, from somebody continually abusing, you know, I mean, let it go to
I believe we have a modification in our ordinance for repeat offenders for solid waste and tall weeds.
Okay.
That it's, the minimum fine increases. So we do what we can do with the municipal court, which has raised the fines. The judges will, at a certain point, put someone on probation and make them come back and report that their grass is mowed, or it'll make them come in and do community service for the city when it really becomes dangerous or a safety issue.
And then, I don't have any reason to believe this is a danger or a, a safety
Or a nuisance issue.
Nuisance, absolutely. Because I, again, when, when these people only take action, when the enforcement officer comes around and gives them a notice that, and it's several times a summer, I don't, I don't think the neighbors should have to necessarily put
And what I would encourage you, Alderman Cornell and any of the other Alder people, is to let us know what those problem properties are, because like I said, sometimes, you know, one of the things we worked on last year at the mayor's request, and I think it worked out very well, was personal contact.
Yeah.
To really try to make an effort to go out and talk to people, just not stick notices up on the door. That was something we worked at with our nuisance and abatement program. But the problem properties, we have to get notification early and often so we can begin those processes of communication, try to identify if it is someone who may be quote-unquote abusing the system or waiting at the last possible minute, because then we can use some of the other tools we have in the box to try to compel enforcement.
Thank you.
Part of compel compliance.
How do you get a vacation violation?
A what?
Vacation vehicle violation?
It's a camper.
That's the camper's
What is that? My RV? No.
Yes, an RV.
What do you, what do you have to do to get that?
Alderman Ock, it was one of probably the longest debates over multiple meetings about where you could park your RV. But honestly, I don't even recall what we ended up with.
Behind the building.
Behind the building.
And that's the same for boats.
I don't think we ever talked about boats, but the vacation vehicles was a long discussion about that. We can look it up and bring it back to you. And if you have a specific one, we can try to
Just for the record, mine's just a really, really big old van.
Well, you know, one thing we do that, we don't do that a lot of communities do in St. Louis County, which really helps the appearance, is they don't allow vehicles to be parked on grass.
Yeah.
You have to have a paved or a rock surface. You have to have a paved or a rock surface, actually probably paved. And it's amazing, you can drive through the community and some of these cars are sitting in their front yard, you know, and I always wanted to bring that up as an improvement, but I, you know, never had the nerve. But I mean, it's just, it makes a world of difference.
It's not a zoning ordinance, so if it's something you guys want to consider, it's something we can...
I think it's something the board should think about.
I would go along with you on that.
Because that's, thank you, I guess I'm a gurvy, because that really distracts the quality of the neighborhood. You have two or three vehicles parked in the front yard on the grass.
Chief, there's a yard out on the north part of Farrelane Circle that had some neighbors call in, and it's waist-high. I mean, it hasn't been...
We addressed that today.
Did you?
Yeah.
Did you cut it?
I didn't.
I mean, when you say you addressed it, maybe you're out there with a weed.
Apparently there's a new tenant in there that just took occupancy.
Yeah, a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, they're going to address that immediately.
How about item B, chief, unless you all, is there any other questions on that topic, on these reports? The signs?
The signs on the two streets, starting on my homework assignments because when I was at the beach, you all found a bunch of things to do. But that's, but that's good. You know, I, I'm never going to be opposed to warning people about children at play. So, you know, obviously my recommendation for both of those locations is to go ahead and place some signs there. The 300 block of McKinley is kind of an oddball because there's no clear delineation on that street where the 300 and the 400 block are. So I think we just extend that zone between the 300 and the 400 block and call it done. So with your, with your approval, I'll work with Guy on getting those signs placed so we get the most bang for the buck there.
We're all on board with that.
Okay, good. We'll get that done then. Thank you. Dryden Street. We surveyed all the residents on Dryden Street in reference to eliminating parking on one side of the street. Of the 13 residences that are on that block, which is between Oak and the cul-de-sac, so everything north of Oak, nine of them were in favor of eliminating parking on one side. We had one that we couldn't contact and three no's. So pretty overwhelmingly, people are in favor of no parking on one side of the street. I also talked to fire department chief and the director of the ambulance base, and they're absolutely in favor of that. Certainly makes both of their lives easier trying to get their equipment in and out of there. As far as which side of the street to pick, there's pros and cons in both directions. I think the most obvious thing is there's a fire hydrant on the east side of the street. Making sure that there's good access to that is probably the most important thing in my mind. So I think my recommendation at this point would be to go ahead and eliminate parking on the east side of Dryden.
Where would you propose that to end? Does it, if, if we're talking about emergency access, once they get down to the cul-de-sac, does it really matter if they're parked on the east side of the circle? Or could it just be from Oak down to where the road starts to...
And not include the circle?
My concern, yeah, my concern is, and I haven't been on that street when everybody's parked on the street. If you limit, if you limit it to one side, is there enough road space in between the driveways to park everything that traditionally parks on the street?
Yeah, I think, I think there will be.
Okay.
That plus the driveway space. I think there should have enough. And that's actually a great idea to keep parking around the cul-de-sac. The other issue that I kind of looked at was access to the post boxes that are on the street. Not all of them are on the street, but the left section in the circle are actually on the street. If we allowed parking all the way around the circle, that kind of eliminates that as a problem, so.
Okay. What do we need to do on that? Do we need a...
An ordinance...
An ordinance revision on that?
Yes.
Chief, I do have one question. Three people, three families or houses that say no, is that on the east side of the street?
No, they were on opposite sides of the street.
Opposite side, okay. I thought maybe the reason they were saying no is because they, they want parking on their side.
Well, at the point that we asked them that, we didn't, we didn't have any idea what side we were going to recommend, so.
Counselor Gaville, you'll take your drawing up.
Now you get the homework.
Yep, we'll get that.
How about item D, motorized...
Motorized bicycles.
There we go.
This was the topic of several spirited discussions between Counselor Gaville and Ultimately, I think my recommendation is to repeal that section of the code, at least maybe temporarily. Let's go back. The genesis of ordinance 310045 apparently goes back to when these little pocket bikes first came out and the kids were running rampant around the streets in quarantine. So obviously a clear safety hazard, for whatever reason, there was no enforcement going on. I think in the meantime, though, did we have codification since then? And that's, I think that's when we ended up with section 385, which actually mirrors the state code regarding motorized bicycles. In section 385, basically it says, you know, motorized bicycle is a vehicle under 50 cc's, requires license reflectors, requires a licensed driver to operate it, and says it can't be used on interstate highway. Just, that's just a number of things, but provides really good guidance for people who operate motorized bicycles on the street. So I also took a look at the City of Troy, City of St. Peters, City of Creve Court, City of Fallon Code, and they too all mirror the state code. Some of them actually have some additions. And a couple of those additions, things that I like and would like to see in our code as well, is helmet use, requiring financial responsibility, and also part of 310045, which would be the one that we would want to repeal, says that you can't operate them on any property that's owned by the city, so that would include parks and cemetery and whatnot. So I think I'd like to see that in section 385 as well, just to clear that up for everybody. But really, I think, you know, Counselor Gaville's opinion was that, you know, there's a, there's a safety issue. And I don't disagree with that, but I think, I think I'd like to give this an opportunity to work. Obviously, there's, there's somebody who thinks that, you know, those are, a method of moving around town that's convenient, it's, it's cheap. I'd like to give it a shot and see if it does become an issue. See if we have enforcement issues, see if we have safety issues. You know, maybe take a look at it six months down the road, and I'll come back to you and tell you what my findings are at that point and revisit them.
Mr. Dray?
Can I stand up there and talk here?
Just a minute, just a minute.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to ask him a question.
He's not on the agenda, so.
Oh, I can't ask him a question.
So we can't take questions from the audience, all right? I won't allow that.
Is this the gentleman?
He's the gentleman with the mopia.
Okay.
So, okay. Is that it?
Yeah, I would recommend repealing it for, you know, six months just to see, along with those additions to the code.
So we're going to need some new ordinance drafted.
So, well, it would just be additions to section 385 that's already in the code, but homework for my friends.
On the list, number five.
Counselor Gaville, will you take care of it?
Yep, I'll work with them. We've already kind of game plan what we're going to do.
Bring it back to us later. Okay.
When's, when's later? Can you have that ready for the next meeting so this gentleman?
Can ride a scooter.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, chief?
I have one other thing. It's a maintenance agreement for the storm warning sirens. We are currently not under a maintenance agreement. This is something that we actually budgeted for this year and would like to definitely get it in this year's budget. They cover callouts with, I think, a 96-hour response time. So, you know, we test those once a month, and when we have an issue, we call them and come out and take care of it. They also replace the batteries on a regular schedule as part of it.
You say we're not on one? I thought we, we've had one.
Nope.
We elapsed or never had one.
I don't think we've ever been on a maintenance agreement with, we certainly haven't been with these guys. These are the folks that installed that new siren on Frick.
I thought we were on one. So what do we do now? You're saying we maintain them ourselves?
No, we don't maintain them. If there's an issue with them, we call them and they come out and charge us an hourly rate. So they charge us for the travel time and the time that they spend on site.
How much have we been averaging annually?
I have been really, really lucky. I've only had to call them once, and that was a $400 callout.
For one callout?
For one callout.
You know what my next question is? I mean, does it, if we've historically spent $400 on one callout to enter into a $3,400 a year, is that, and I don't, I don't know. It certainly raises the question, would we be better off having them come out, change the batteries in them on a one-time callout and then continue on the way we're doing?
Well, I think, you know, the sirens themselves are starting to get some age on them, and I would feel more comfortable if we had a situation where, you know, all we got to do is make the call and they, they show up without any question. You know, the other thing about not being on a maintenance agreement is they get to us when they get to us. This has got a 96-hour commitment.
Your one-time callout was that to come out and work on one siren?
Yes.
So we're, but we're talking about they're going to check them all?
They'll, yeah, they'll stay on top of all of them.
I think, I think with the weather situation that we've been having lately, we want to make sure they're all working properly and up to date.
So, the approval for the mayor's assignment?
Second.
Is this in our budget?
Yes.
Second by Alderman Ock, second by Alderman Cornell. No, who was that? Oh, Jim. Second by Alderman Dyer to approve the maintenance agreement with BVPS in an amount of $3,444.
I'm, I'm sorry, are they the only ones that do this?
You know, they, they aren't, but they have done all the work here for us in the past. As I said, they installed that siren on Frick. So I feel very comfortable with them providing the service.
I'm sorry.
You have a discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
No.
Alder Person Castle Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Flack?
No.
Motion carried four to two.
That's all I have, Dave.
Thank you, chief. I think we're ready for Mr. Gevers. Good evening. He's hiding way in the back. Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I have a few items, first items, the monthly report. We had 14 sewer calls. Twelve of them were on homeowners, one was an older complaint, and one was a backup in the basement. And then the water line on Second Street in Vashell, the Johannesburg's completed with the services, but we still have driveway repairs and yard work to do there. And then Seventh Street from Lakeview to Country Circle, the main is in, but the services need to be installed. We're still waiting for our samples to come back from that, and then we'll install the services. And we've been doing some roadwork repairs. There's a lot of streets cut. We've been doing some asphalt work and some, a lot of dirt work from the snow removal where we've gouged people's yards.
Alderman Cornell, are you going to bring up the Kitty College?
I will, I will bring it up because I got a follow-up. I understand you went out and personally met with the, the manager of Wesleyan Kitty College in regards to their concerns about water loss. I appreciate you taking the time to personally address that. They expressed to me earlier this week their concern and their frustration with this happening. My understanding is that's kind of a mystery maze out there as to what shuts off and what affects their water service.
That's correct.
And what doesn't.
Originally, the work that we did out there shouldn't have interfered with their water, but it turned south.
Okay. You think you've got, got it to where you can at least give them enough advance notice that...
Yeah, I worked, I worked with her and discussed what her options were and what would be the best options. She seemed happy after I left.
Thank you for making them happy.
I have to admit with that water shut off at Second Street, I know we have procedures, I know we identify, you know, you may need to boil, et cetera. I obviously spend a lot of time on Third Street, and we were very confused as to whether we should boil or not boil. And I just, I just wonder if there's a clearer way sometime to get that message to a lot of the folks that, that may need a clear message whether to boil or not because we weren't sure if our water was okay.
You, what we normally do is we'll hang cards on the door and they'll have the city's phone number, and then on the backside, we added information on the boil order, boil. And it's not a boil order, it's voluntary. It's when you lose pressure below 20 PSI, we recommend to boil the water, but it's not a violation of any...
Health requirement.
Right. And then we go back and when we're done, then we'll rehang cards and let everybody know. A lot of times, you put them on the door because we can't go to the mailbox. So sometimes you just put it on the front door, some people open the garage door, pull right in and never go to the front door. So then you'll get somebody that didn't know about it, or the wind blows it off. I can look into maybe coming up with something different on the block. If it, if it's like that water leak we had in 47, that was so massive, you know, signage wouldn't do us a whole lot of good. It was going door-to-door.
I'm just thinking of some of the older population citizens in town and the confusion. I don't know how else to, to make it clear because I wasn't actually sure if that water should be boiled. If you had a health issue, should you have boiled the water and not ice it and bought water? You know, so I just wonder...
I'll look into that and see if we can change it.
I just wonder if there's some other people in the same situation that may have questioned that.
I'll look into changing it.
I was under the same thing when the water main was broke at McGee, I guess it's McGee and 47. And evidently I wasn't part of it, but I thought possibly I was.
Yeah.
It is, but I, I think going door-to-door and putting those tags on, I don't know what else you can do.
And we also contact communication.
We have it on our website.
And we, and we contact communication too with 911.
But older populations not going to the website.
But they do have a door and we put it on there.
You know, maybe what we could do is send out a letter, although there's a cost associated with that, just a reminder to say, if there is a water issue in your area, you will get a hanger on your door and kind of explain what that means.
Explain what it is.
So they understand before they get the door hanger.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of a reminder of...
I don't think that's a bad idea.
Could we do, could we do a short...
Postcard.
Or a short, short notification on a section of the water bill?
There's not enough room on the water bill to do anything that would make sense other than to confuse people. It's a very limited number of characters.
Maybe it's something we try to see if the local paper would publish something about the local water and go that way.
Maybe, maybe they write an article on it or something.
Yeah, just do kind of an article on what it means to have a...
He will set the articles already written.
Do you put it on a radio too, Guy?
No, we do not.
You do not? Some of the older people might listen to KFAR.
And I don't know if we could put it in the end of paper or put something in the paper, you know, given the steps.
That's a good idea.
And then put even our service, if they have a sewer problem, too, the step to do, and then maybe do that quarterly or something. Then we get a discount from the newspaper.
Can you guys come to set up a meeting with me?
Yes.
I think it'd be a great idea, Guy, if you have a meeting with the local paper.
That way we can do the procedures if somebody has a sewer complaint, what phone call they can make.
What else you got, Guy? Some bids?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. First item is a portable trailer mount generator. In this unit here, I budgeted $90,000, and it come in at $95,172. And our hydro excavator was budgeted at $65,000. I came in under budget on that. So I wanted to use $5,000, no, yeah, $5,172.
I just gotta know what we use a generator for.
It's a portable generator. We can, we'll be able to hook it up to a well. Well seven has the only generator to operate that well, so if we lose power...
So it's for emergency use to use in any of our wells?
Right, so we can hook it up to a well, our two wells, but not at the same time. And if we had to move it over, the city of Joplin was out of power for 30 days. I figured tornado went through. So, you know, we could move, and if we didn't lose that well seven out there, we can move it to well six by six.
Is there any kind of Homeland Security grants available to recover?
Homeland Security funding is disappearing very fast. Chief actually sits on that committee, and I know it because I've actually asked him for funding from Homeland Security for, for a generator of this type when Guy said he was looking for it. And the funding from that is shrinking and disappearing very, very fast. Because we did receive our generator that we have stationed out back by the point that turns from Homeland Security.
How often will we, do we use it?
We will exercise it yearly to make sure it ain't working right.
I guess my point is, if this is something you use once a year, would it be easier to rent one?
Well, if we, if we, when I called Joplin, the issue was when they needed one, they couldn't get one.
Everybody else was needing one too.
It was supply and demand, and it averages about $3,000 a week to rent one, if you could get one. And it's more than, this helps with our emergency operation plan with DNR, so...
How does that...
It's a lot of money.
How would it help with that?
That we have to have a backup source for our well, and also to our lift stations too, because it could also be hooked up to the lift stations too, if we have a power outage in a certain part of town.
Could this run the wastewater too?
It'll, it'll, if we hook it up to the wastewater, we have two generators, every lift station we have got a generator, and every, at the wastewater plant is run by generators too. So if we had a failure, this generator could be put in use at one of them facilities.
And I understand that these are ones that, you know, it's not, it's not important until you need it, but I'm, for $95,000, I, I mean, it makes you wonder if we've, we've existed this long without one. What, what would happen if we lost power? Could that one well that has a generator, could that supply the city on a limited basis?
No, we'd have to, we'd have to get another well fired up. If it was a massive, then we'd have to fire, but we'd have to get another well running. And would more likely, we'd had to get the two wells running when it would go back to the water consumption, so that'd be only natural.
So is this something on prior boards we've talked about? This is, this is part of like budget planning last year or something?
It's in the budget.
We discussed this need last year and determined it was worthy of putting in the budget?
So what was the thinking in the budget committee last year? I don't specifically recall on this one. I, I will say that Guy, every time Guy has a piece of equipment break, it seems like a $100,000 bill. And, and I understand about planning for contingencies, but I wonder if we're, we're planning out for so many obscure contingencies that this money couldn't be better used for some of the other stuff that Guy breaks.
Guy doesn't break.
I'm giving, I'm giving Guy a little bit of grief. Guy is very expensive, but I, I just wonder if, again, it, it, it kind of comes down to wins enough, enough, and I don't know the answer to that necessarily, but, you know, is, if one generator will run one well, wouldn't two do better? It's just a, just seems like a lot of money for a contingency, and I know next time that we're without power and no water, I'll be saying, man, I wish we had bought that generator.
Only need used it once.
Well, let me ask you another $100,000 question that always came up, is, is used better than new? Just as a contingency item, is it used better than new?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Would we, if it's not gonna be used except for rarely, are we better off investing in a used one than a new one? As opposed to having $100,000 sitting around having $35,000 or $50,000 sitting around?
Or can you even find them to use?
I don't know. We didn't bid for the used one.
I didn't, I didn't bid for a used one, that's correct. We budgeted for a new.
Guy, Guy, let's say, worst case scenario, something like the disaster that happened a couple of days ago, God forbid, would happen here. I understand that there may not be a place in St. Charles or St. Louis that you can drive down to and rent one, but surely there might be one in Iowa or Kentucky or someplace that within a matter of a day or two, you, you could have one. Is, is that worth $100,000 to, I don't know.
The gentleman that I had come in and looked at our lift stations and then looked at our wells, wrote the specs for what wattage we need, and that's how the generator specs were wrote. Whether you could go and get one and then have somebody come in and hook it up, I don't know that answer. But I'm thinking you, I'm sure you need a certain wattage, it's a, it's a 400 kilowatt generator. And that's why I had somebody else write the specs, and this gentleman here has done one, he's done Warren County Fire and the ambulance, he's done St. Charles, 911 police.
Does Warren County Fire have a portable one?
They have a portable generator.
What's a kilowattage?
That I do not know. But if we have a master, a major catastrophe, we're not getting a generator. They're gonna use it for what they need. Whether it's major, then they're gonna send a, set of a makeshift hospital at the ambulance district and at the fire station. So that's where that's going. It's an insurance card is what it is, whether we want to spend the $95,000 for the insurance or not.
Absolutely, we all, we all make a judgment on how much coverage we have. I, I just, and where is that, that balancing point of...
We might not ever use it, but then one time.
I'm an insurance person, so I would probably go ahead and do it since it's in the budget, but I see both sides of it. It's a very difficult decision, but I would hate to have a Shawnee or a City of Moore and, and we not have water or any way to get water. I, I don't know, it's just, it's, it's a tough decision to spend the money. There's obviously been discussion about it already, but, you know, obviously, we're not big into that, but we knew it was important.
But we've also had other issues that came up in the last year.
That's true. We had discussions about it.
Well, to move it off the table, let me just make a motion, see if it flows or not. I make a motion that we reject any and all bids.
That you reject any and all bids? See if they have a second. If you don't get a second, then... I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Ock to reject all bids, second by Alderman Cornell. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flank?
No.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casserly?
No.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
No.
We did have that bid.
Oh, my God.
I'm gonna vote yes. I'm, I was in the insurance business and I like to be insured, so the motion carries forward three.
The motion, if you vote yes, you just kill the purchase. No, he can't reverse his motion. He already made it. We gotta move on to the next one.
You had a negative motion. You've never had negative motions. No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no.
So now we need a motion to accept the bid of $95,000. I'll make a motion to accept the bid for $95,172 from Global Tech Power in Troy, Missouri, for the generator to specs.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Casserly, second by Alderman Flank to accept the low bid from Global Tech Power, Troy, Missouri, for a portable trailer-mounted 400 KW generator in the amount of $95,172. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
No.
Alder Person Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
No.
Alderman Clark?
No.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
We vote yes. Motion carried forward three. All right, welder bid. I hope this is easier than the generator bid.
When you ask for $3,500 and budget $10,000?
Should've started with this one, but...
Yeah, I was gonna say, if I knew you were this far, I would've budgeted on the welder. I would've voted yes on the generator.
Portable welder.
This is to put in one of our service trucks. We got some guide rails and they had the need to be welded, and we have no way of getting to them.
Make a motion to accept low bid. Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark to accept the low bid from Airgas in the amount of $3,656.12. Roll call, please.
Alder Person Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Next item is a snowplow.
I know we don't need that right now.
This is for the new service truck that we received. Went with NAPI at St. Peters. A big part of that is, that's what we have under plow, and if we need parts, they're, be able to get them quick.
And they're the lowest bid, aren't they?
It's the recommendation.
It's the same company.
Go to NAPI at St. Peters for $4,989.
Wouldn't, would you propose to purchase that now?
Yes.
Is it cheaper now or...?
No, I don't, I don't believe it that the prices changed. I did not ask that question, no.
Well, based on supply and demand, I would expect it to be a little bit cheaper, but...
I'll make a motion to approve to purchase a snowplow for utility truck from NAPI at St. Peters for $4,989.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flank, seconded by Alderman Dryer to accept the low bid on the snowplow from Canepheady, St. Peters in the amount of $4,989. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casserly?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Next item is a portable compressorator, and it's a two-stage air compressor with a 3,500-watt generator. That's to run our air tools and lights on job scenes and that'll go in the back of the service truck.
Does Sidenrecker know we had a budget of $2,300?
No, not that I know of.
Did, is this replacing...
This come off the, off the internet too.
Is this replacing a piece of equipment?
No, it's going into the service truck.
What did we do before for the compressorator? We didn't have one?
We didn't have one.
How are we running our compressor?
One of the service trucks has air, has a compressor on it, it doesn't have a generator. And the issue is, like the other night, we didn't have a whole lot for lights.
Make a motion to accept low bid. Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Dryer to accept the low bid on the portable compressor from Scheidenstricker in the amount of $2,299. Roll call, please.
Was that you? Was that you?
No.
That did the second?
No.
Alderman Clark.
Alderman Clark was second.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Next item's the chip seal at Fairlane Circle.
Oh, Fred?
We're doing this for Fred? You could just chip like one house deep, just one house, yeah.
The road, the road's falling apart out there and it's cracked. And Chester Brothers came in at low bid for $33,450. We have a little patching we have to do out there before they come in, but it's just probably half a day's worth of work.
Make a motion to accept the low bid of Chester Bros Construction in the amount of $33,450 for a chip and seal of Fairlane Circle?
Second. Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flank to accept the low bid from Chester Bros Construction, animals in Missouri, for the chip and seal of Fairlane Circle in the amount of $33,450. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Tell, or Alder Person Casserly?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Can't wait to tell Phil that.
You don't look anything like that.
Well, I'll shave my head next time.
Can I cast you a question?
Yes, sir.
Since these bids are coming in so low, you've got a savings here of almost $50,000. Were there projects that were left off, the budget, that we could reconsider since the prices are so low?
Just got a pump thing.
On the next item...
Well, the pump is in the budget, though.
Yeah, on the chip seal, I probably could do that. That was covering all of Fairlane Circle. When I initially got the prices, contractor came in and gave me a ballpark figure and what it would take to do that, so then that's the number I went with. I guess with all the competition out there, it came in a lot lower because at the moment it's $46,000. So I missed it on the initial beginning, but I'm sure we could probably use some of it for some asphalt or something.
I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, because it seems like we have an opportunity to pick up projects or maybe cut off the budget this year because we thought prices were gonna come in higher. And I was in the budget process, I don't know what was cut out of the budget, because there's always tons of requests for street improvements in this area.
We covered everything that was proposed.
Really?
So we can use it for sidewalks.
Well, I think on this next one is where your opportunity to utilize those funds comes, because on the milling and paving bid, this was only a portion of that subdivision, because we thought that's all we could afford, so...
I mean, I think we need to take advantage of the cheap price if we got the budget, and then assuming the budget's in line...
Sure.
You know, that we should take advantage of the price to either finish the project or, I mean, because we certainly didn't do everything, because then there will be a thing in the budget for next year. So there is stuff to do, so if we can extend it and spend down to 70, get the whole area done, why not?
Or, or that money's gonna be there, we're going into a budget process to, to use that for consideration next year.
Yeah, but you may bid next year and may not get its good price. I'm saying take advantage of when you got it.
And I can look, I know there's other places in town that we could do some chip seal work and maybe pick up some streets that way.
Well, I don't think it necessarily has to be chip seal. What you're saying is, if there's other street projects, let's utilize those funds while we've got the good prices, and I think that plays right into the next item.
I mean, I'm not opposed to that at all. If we could identify, I don't know how we'd get it through in the budget period, but if we could identify those projects, and does the board have to approve? Maybe at the next meeting, we just, okay, you've got the difference between seventy and forty-five thousand. For twenty-five thousand dollars more, we can do da-da-da, then just approve and go ahead and do it. Because they're not going to get it done the next year, it's more than two weeks.
Two weeks, I believe, is after notification.
Well, I mean.
But I can look into that, absolutely.
I mean, unless I'm way out base, but I would think it'd be advantage to do some more stuff. People love street work.
Need a bid for the milling and paving?
That came in at, I budgeted seventy thousand dollars. This is out there at Andorra Estates, and they've, the streets have been paved numerous times. So they're going to grind the edges in and out a little bit, and that came in at forty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Columbus Circle needs some work, that's off of Nina and Penta. Columbus Circle also needs to be done, so we're going to pick up some more footage off of that and use, like you were saying, use up to that seventy thousand dollars and get what I can get off of Columbus Circle and then budget for next year to pick up the rest.
I mean, I don't have an issue with it.
How do you do that?
No, I don't have a problem with that if that, but how would you do that?
What I would recommend is approving guy to work with the contractor. We can do it as a change order to the milling and paving contract to add whatever area we can add for the money that we have available. And then he can bring that back next meeting, a report to say, here's the other areas that we can include for the money that we have to spend. Because our plan was to put these other streets in next year's budget because it was such a large project.
Well, we need to approve this on the forty-four thousand seven thirty-nine?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Entertaining motion?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Ock to approve the bid for Nina and Penta Drive from Mid Rivers Asphalt, Troy, Missouri, in the amount of forty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Next item is wastewater treatment plant engineering agreement.
Do we have paperwork on that?
I don't think we did.
It's in your, it's bill number seventeen thirteen.
What is it?
Bill number seventeen thirteen, that's the agreement. That was saving paper.
Thank you.
I don't have that, do I?
Yeah, it's seventeen thirteen.
Bill number seventeen thirteen?
It's twenty C on your.
If you use paper. John's giving that, I noticed.
He's got a question number?
I'm sorry, it's twenty C?
Twenty C is the PDF, I believe.
It's seventeen dash three, I don't know what it's on.
Seventeen dash thirteen?
Yeah.
Got it.
Twenty C, bill number seventeen.
So while they're looking this up, in a nutshell, what is, what are they doing?
Hundred and ninety-eight thousand five hundred and ten dollars, price-wise, you get what you're asking, how much?
What is the scope of the project real briefly for some of the lessons we're hearing?
Providing plant facilities, identifying improvement needs for the collection system and treatment plant, determining the financing operations of the project, reviewing the existing collection systems, hydraulic and organic loading, data system, planning for twenty years of expansion. They're going to evaluate the main trunk lines of the mains, lift stations, force mains, all the major processes and the equipment that the plant will be evaluated. This is including the bar screen and the sludge handling process.
So it's just a general engineering overview of the system and where we're at, where we could go?
And what needs to be expanded.
And it's the preliminary engineering for the wastewater treatment plant expansion.
And this is expected to be completed, it looks like, in six months? Is that correct?
And they have to have the preliminary report to us so that if the decision is to go out for a bond issue on the November ballot, which is due to the clerk in August, this report is due to us in order to have those numbers for the August date for the ballot.
Are they aware of that and is that somewhere in this contract?
Yes.
Because I'm seeing final presentation in a hundred and seventy days. I don't see anywhere where they have to, where they're contractually obligated to present that in.
Alderman Cornell, what I would recommend is, if you guys want to approve it with that contingency, we'll put that contingency in.
Yeah, I, they are well aware of it.
We'll make sure it's in there, so we'll go ahead and write that in there, I'm sure they'll approve it now. So I'd ask that if there is a motion made to approve it, that include that contingency to meet the City of War.
Make a motion to accept the, oh, wait a second, we don't even need that.
Anything else, Guy?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. My next item is the, let me see if I can get my building report. Mr. Daley.
Good evening. Month table permits issued.
Is that it? Okay. Oh, there it is, we're good.
Hit your little window, Guy, there. Hit the window, can I?
Technical difficulty, that's all right, we can figure it out. Okay, Jim, are you ready for us?
Yes, sir. I've got your April permit issued. Your first part there. And I also have your maintenance and complaints, property maintenance and whatnot for April.
Define underpinning.
Is disturbing around a mobile home.
Oh, okay.
Any questions for Jim?
We got nothing.
Took me a while to figure out what C of W was, but I got it.
What issues?
City of War. A citizen of War. Citizen of War, right? Citizen of Warton or City of War?
City of War.
City.
Oh, I was going to say citizen of War.
Oh, yeah, City of War, yes.
Okay, any questions for Jim? From any board members? Anything else, Jim?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for sticking around.
Okay, I'm down to bills, bill number fifteen thirteen.
Call for the first reading of bill number fifteen thirteen.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dyer for first reading of bill number fifteen thirteen.
In ordinance finding and declaring a certain area to be a blighted area pursuant to section one thirty-five point nine five zero to one thirty-five point nine seven zero of the Missouri revised statutes.
Call for the second final reading and passage of bill number fifteen thirteen, second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Cornell for second reading and passage of bill number fifteen thirteen.
In ordinance finding and declaring a certain area to be a blighted area pursuant to section one three-five point nine five zero to one three-five point nine seven zero of Missouri revised statutes.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
No.
Motion carried five to one.
Real quick comment before we read the next one. You know, I've done a lot of reading on the easy zone, and I've never read anything that says they're detrimental. People question, are they effective? But in all the readings, no one has ever said they were detrimental. And some of the same zoning issues that people have, they have with zoning, whether it's in the zone or not. You brought that out very well last meeting, and I know that's a concern of yours, but you would have the same issue with the plant coming in next to you, whether it was in the zone or not. It's a pure zoning issue, so I don't have any problem with this.
I'm on item twenty, bills to ordinances, bill number sixteen thirteen.
Call for the first reading of bill number sixteen thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Kessley for first reading of bill number sixteen thirteen.
In ordinance supporting an application for an enhanced enterprise zone and establishing the real property tax abatement rates for the Warren County Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
Call for the second final reading and passage of bill number sixteen thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dyer for second and final reading and passage of bill number sixteen thirteen.
In ordinance supporting an application for an enhanced enterprise zone and establishing the real property tax abatement rates for the Warren County Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
Roll call, please.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
No.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried five to one. Bill number seventeen thirteen.
Call for a first reading of bill number seventeen thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyer, seconded by Alderman Kessley for first reading of bill number seventeen thirteen.
In ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between Gonzalez Companies LLC and the city of Warrenson, Missouri for engineering services for a wastewater facility plan.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number seventeen thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Clark for second and final reading and passage of bill number seventeen dash thirteen.
In ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between Gonzalez Companies LLC and the city of Warrenson, Missouri for engineering services for a wastewater facility plan.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Entertaining a motion for adjournment to executive session to discuss personnel and legal counsel.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Dyer to move to executive session to discuss personnel and legal counsel. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
For adjourn, motion carried six to zero.